Okay, it is 5:34. We will call this meeting to order. If you'll stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
Hi, Pledge of Allegiance, to the right of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, roll call, Michelle.
Bucker, Dave, Barto.
Here.
Bobby Brown. Bill McNelson. Here. Kristen Knappmiller. Danny Mary.
Yes.
Danny Hyatt.
Here.
Andy Schreiber. Here. Casey Schroeder. Schreider. Catherine Song. Here.
Okay, public comment. Ted, is there anybody? Nobody signed up? Oh, I thought you were gonna... Okay, letter E, annual budget hearing. We'll turn it over to our business manager, Kelly Fussbender.
Thank you, and welcome to the 2024 budget hearing. I would just like to start off by thanking the business office team that we have. We have an entirely new team. We had some long-time retirements. And we had one person shift to a different position, and they have both... Lori Leiterman has been a blessing in helping transition our new person and team, as well as Erin, who shifted to a different position but is still working through that transition. So they have been tremendous throughout the last couple of months. So if you turn to... I did give everybody a hard copy of the slides that you'll be seeing. And for the public, they're also attached. So if anybody wants to click on those in Word docs. So our agenda for this evening is we will highlight... Take some highlights from the Biennium budget. We'll do an overview of the school district revenue limits. We'll take a look at the budget timeline, a budget overview. And then we'll break that down to an overview of the budget by fund. We'll look at our fund balance. And then we'll talk about the new administrative team's current and ongoing budgetary analysis, and what we have been doing and continually will be doing throughout the year. We'll take a look at cash flow, enrollment, and then lastly, we'll look at the proposed tax levy and mill rate. So on that first slide, you're taking a look, a real high-level look at that budget timeline. So end of November to December of this year, we start to work on next year's budget projections already. We review the preliminary very high-level budget forecasting for the next year. We look at enrollment projections, enrollment history, revenue expenditures, and then we begin planning for initiatives. It says new initiatives, but we, as an administrative team, are really building on the initiatives that are already in place, and then working with the board on honing those in. From January to June of 2024, we'll look at updating the updates to the revenue limit and then other revenues. We'll determine staffing levels and what those associated costs are. We'll review and determine budget priorities. We will estimate district level expenditures, including new priorities and initiatives. We will be updating our forecasting model with the latest known variables and assumptions. And then we'll share preliminary budgets with the Board of Education, and then the board will approve that preliminary budget. Looking from... In the future, from July to September of 2024, that's when we'll have public hearing. We'll look at our statutory requirements. And then we'll look at reviewing and analyzing the prior year's results, tracking changes from what that preliminary budget said to what the final budget is. And then we will again be updating that forecasting model with the latest known variables. And then in a year from now, October 2024, we'll have that annual meeting, which we're in right now. We will update our revenue limit worksheet with the known figures. And then we'll be reviewing internal revenue limits and our equalization aid worksheets with the October 15 final calculations. And then our board will adopt final school tax levy and budget. And then we'll certify those levies with the local municipalities. So looking at the highlights from our 2023-25 signed Biennium budget, looking at the revenue limit, that was adjusted from $0 to $325 per member in 2023, 24, and then every year thereafter. Because we are a low-revenue, low-spending district, we had an increase from $10,000 to $11,000 for our low-revenue limit ceiling. Voucher per pupil for private school vouchers, those had an increase in the budget. So from K8, they went from $8,399 to $9,893. Looking at 9 through 12, that was an increase from about $9,000 to about $12,400. And then thinking about special education, that went from about $13,000 to about $15,000. So there's a pretty significant increase in voucher allocations per pupil, which we will talk about how that impacted our district in the future of this presentation. Looking at open enrollment, we had a per-pupil increase of $394 in 2023, 24. And there'll be in... And then in 24, 25, it'll be $344. Looking at special ed categorical aid, there is an increase of reimbursement for eligible special education costs to 33.3 from 30%.
Why is it called the membership instead of like count? Is that a statutory term or is it just...
Well, membership and counts are different. So when you're thinking about membership and what they call membership, that is your total member. So that includes your open enrollment counts or your voucher counts. But then when you're looking at head count, that's your third Friday count, that's your actual pupils which are in your seats. So membership equals money is kind of what you want to remember. And then there is different calculations with three-year averages and things of how you get your...
So tell me that one more time. Andy goes, a low-revenue district, we'll be able to increase it initial 675 per member.
Yes.
To meet the 11,000 per member. So how is that different than per student? It's a different...
So your membership is calculated differently than your third Friday count. Your third Friday count is actually the children who are in their seats on the third Friday of September.
Okay.
Your membership is the counts, the total members of your school district. So like if your members open enroll out, you still get the money for that. But when we talked about how much like open enrollment is, we pay out a certain amount for those members to go to another district or for voucher schools, same type of thing. They're still your members, but you pay out a certain amount of money for them to be attending private school or a different public school for open enrollment. And I can get you more information.
That's good enough. I just didn't remember hearing that before, so I...
Yeah, they are different and they are confusing. So when we're thinking about analyzing resident membership, so if you look at the bottom, you're thinking about that head count, and then that's minusing your open enrollment and you're adding your open enrollment out, which is equaling your resident student count. And then you're multiplying that by your early childhood and 4K probation, because they don't calculate a full FTE. And it is pretty complex with how those are calculated as well. And then that equals your resident membership, your FTE. So then you take your resident membership FTE, multiply that times your dollar amount per pupil, you add in any of your one-time non-recurring exemptions, you add your ongoing reoccurring exemptions, and then that equals your revenue limit authority. And we'll talk more about that. So when you're calculating your school district's revenue limit, there's four steps. The first one is determining the previous year's base. And you do that by adding your general aids, your state aids for exempt computer and personal property, your state aid for high poverty, and then the local tax levy. The base revenue is then divided by the prior year's September average enrollment to arrive at your base revenue per member. So then the next step would be that you add your allowable per-member increase to the revenue base, per-member amount, and that's calculated in step one. This inflationary increase is set by the legislator. And then originally, this was tied to the Consumer Price Index. The amount has varied from a high of 274 in the fiscal year of 2009 and then to a low of negative 5.29 in 2012. So this past July, the legislator set the increase, which JD had mentioned, of 325 per member for this school year. But for districts that did not reach the low revenue ceiling with that 325, which we would have been at $10,325, we didn't reach that, like other districts in our situation. So then the legislator said, you get an additional 675 to bring you up to the 11,000. Because how certain districts historically, and Dr. Barto has talked about this prior, is certain districts have spent more money and then they get more money per member. So not all districts are funded equally. So this is kind of trying to help bridge that gap, as I was speaking. So districts with a base revenue lower than a low revenue ceiling, which I just mentioned, and voters have not rejected a referendum during the prior three years. So that's a really big deal to a lot of districts. Thankfully, it's not us. We can raise our base revenue to the low revenue limit ceiling. So because our district is a low-revenue district, then we're able to increase that 675 to the 11,000.
Is it only an operating referendum or is it a building referendum also?
I don't exactly know, but what I understood was that it was every, any referendum that has failed. They were... Yeah, I can look into that, but what I... So what I was told was that it was referendum. So I'd have to look into which type of referendum it would be. So step three, you're going to determine your current membership. The current third Friday enrollment is converted to a full-time equivalent membership, which you'll see that sometimes listed as FTE in capitals. It is combined with the prior two September membership counts, and new average membership is determined. Beginning in 2000, districts could include 40% of their summer school membership. So we reported on that at our last committee meeting, and that's all included in the revenue limit worksheet. This number is then added to your September membership count and included in your three-year average. So when... So part of what is confusing to some is that when we have our number that we are calculating per pupil, that is on a three-year average. So because we have declining enrollment, we're actually benefiting from this three-year average because it's a higher number that we're getting aided on. But then as years go on and you continue, that number will continue to go down. It kind of saves you from that drastic drop right away. So step four, the allowable revenue per member is multiplied by the new three-year average. Districts with declining enrollment are allowed a one-time exemption for the prior year membership loss. The declining enrollment exemption is added to the allowable revenue limit to determine the maximum revenue limit. Since the revenue cap is driven by enrollment, districts with declining enrollment, such as ours, experience significant problems, meaning financial needs of the district. This slide just is a very high-level look at the budget overview, but if you look on page six of your budget book, that has detailed numbers in it. So, and we will go through mill rate, history, and property taxes in those pieces more in detail later in the presentation. But, so you're going to look at your pieces of your budget. You have property tax, which we talked about. Our proposed projected mill rate is $6.21, which is for every thousand of your assessed value. If you look at the property tax detail on page six, you can see that our tax rate is estimated to increase from last year by $1.21. And this is based on an increase in your, in our equalized valuation, which went from $1,338,550, or $1,338,557,199 to basically 1.5 billion. So the equalization value did increase for valuation. And then I have a chart later on, so there's a lot of numbers in this next paragraph discussing the historical views of our mill rate, but I have a chart that's easier to understand if you're more visual later. Then you have equalization aid. So this is provided by the state. And we did have a decrease. As you can see here, these two numbers, there was a decrease from last year from about 6, from $16 million to about $15 million this year.
That seems like a large increase, about $900,000.
You mean decrease?
It's a decrease.
Yes, it is a decrease. So there is an increase. You do have an increase of equalization value, which is a factor in decreased equalization aid. And it also is, when you do have decrease in state aid, that also is impacted. If you don't spend all of your budget. So if you have money going into fund balance, that is money you don't get aided on. The state says, well, you're not using all of your money, so you'll be less aided. If you do put it into Fund 46 and funds such as that, then you've been able.
And just as a refresher, which one did you put it on?
492,000.
Which is on the next page, on page seven. You can see what your fund balance began at and what it ended at. So your revenue limit, we talked a lot about that. That's increasing from $10,000 to $11,000 per member. Our transportation, we have transportation aid, which the most recent aid report was $83,845. And then we also get per-pupil categorical aid, which you can see is a decrease from last year. Not a ton, but there is a decrease. So high-level revenues, when you... This is just helps visualize a little bit of where our revenues come from. So we have local, which is your tax levy, your mobile home taxes, school activities and fees. You have revenues from intermediate sources such as CISA or from another school district from open enrollment. You have state level, which is your equalization aid, categorical aids and grants. You also have federal grants. So ESAR is one of those big federal grants. You have, we also have ESEA grants, which are all of your titles, and then specialized grants, federal grants as well. One of the state grants that we have is called AGR. You've had a lot of reports on those over the years. It was called Sage. It stands for Achievement Gap Reduction. So the next section that we're going to talk about is the breakdown of our funds. So we'll start with the general fund. The budget statement below or on the next couple of slides is presented in accordance with the Wisconsin State Statute 6590 and the Wisconsin Department of Public Instruction's recommendation format for, a recommended format for our budget adoption. And 6590, a Wisconsin State statute, requires the disclosure of the following information. So two years of historical data and what the proposed budget is, anticipated revenues, budgeted expenditures, and what our fund balance disclosure is. So the general fund, that is our operating fund for the district, and it is used to account for all financial resources of the district, except for those that are accounted for in other funds, which we will explore. So this is that breakdown, and Andy, that this is where you're looking at your beginning fund balance of 2023. And again, this is unaudited, but you started with this number and then you ended the year with this number. And then that's the same number, obviously, that we're beginning this budgetary cycle. So you did increase the fund balance in general fund. And when you're looking at this, you can look at the total revenues here. And in the back of your budget book, I do have this printed off and highlighted. So there is another source, not just these slides with all of these. It's the appendix in your budget book. The next one we'll take a look at is our Special Education Fund. So this fund is used to account for all the excess costs of providing special education and related services for students with disabilities during the regular school year or extended school year. So these revenue sources are your federal IDEA and preschool grant, your state categorical aid, Medicaid reimbursements for student-based services. And then there is a budget transfer from the general fund to the Special Education Fund. This fund cannot have a fund balance or deficit that does not exist within this fund. So this is broken down onto two slides. You'll look at the total revenues here at the bottom. You'll see what the budget transfers, which I talked about, from the general fund to the Special Education Fund. And then the next slide is your expenditures. So the total expenditures are here at the bottom. I just, $4,786,596. The next one we'll take a look at is our Special Revenue Fund. This is used for the proceeds for donations and fundraising. Expenditures are limited to specific purposes related to the district operation. New in the past is the conversion of the student activity accounts in Fund 60 to Fund 21. And then beginning in 2021, the Governmental Accounting Standards Board, which is GASP, has released a statement 184, not 184, 84, requiring that the fiduciary nature of student activity accounts is recorded on the district's financial statements. And there may be a fund balance in this fund. So as you can see, the revenues are listed here. You have the beginning fund balance on the top, your ending fund balance, and then the total expenditures at the bottom. Fund 38, which is your non-referendum debt service fund. This is of celebration. The district does not have any debt. And we talked a little bit about this at the task force meeting, about how Dr. Barto led the school board through some key steps to become debt-free. So that is really exciting to see in the district. That was, that final debt payment was in March 2022. Fund 46, which is also a very critical fund for several reasons, which Andy mentioned earlier, talking about Fund 46. When we have a budget surplus or planned surplus, so that we can deposit it into Fund 46, this is a long-term capital improvement trust fund. So especially for districts like ours that wants to focus on facilities and maintaining our facilities and things of that nature, this fund is a place where you get aided when you put the, put surplus funds into it and then you can build that balance and tackle bigger projects. So this fund can, these assets may not be transferred into any other district fund. And the school board, a school board with an approved long-term capital improvement plan, which is also in the budget book, you'll see. It has to be a minimum of 10 years. They may establish a trust fund, which our district did. And then that's funded with a transfer from the general fund. So the contribution from 10 to 46 is recorded as an expenditure, which we talked about earlier, which we can get aided on, so we don't lose our state aid. And that's, so that's really critical to our equalization aid purposes. Future expenditures from Fund 46 are not a part of shared costs. So that's okay, because you're already being funded on, or getting state aid on it. The school board is prohibited from moving money deposited into 46 for a period of five years, but we are past those five years, so we are able to utilize these funds only for things that are approved on that long-term capital improvement plan. And this slide really just talks about the limitations that are associated with Fund 46 activities and access to these funds. So one of the things we'll talk about in the future is just cash flow and fund balance and how all those things play out. And sometimes it's a misconception that all the funds in the fund balance are accessible for cash flow or for using for certain things. So you'll see how those are broken out in the future. And then you can take a look at your beginning fund balance. So for last year, you were here, you added, you added some money into your fund balance. And then we have some expenditures planned for window projects for 1.2 million of that at this point. Looking at Fund 50, these are food service, this is your food service fund. So these funds are used to account and report transactions of the district's food and community service activities. No K-12 instructional or instructional support-related functions are recorded in these funds. All the, all the revenues and expenditures related to pupil food service activities are recorded in this fund. A fund balance in the food service fund is permitted, but there may not be a deficit in this fund. So you can see here what your beginning fund balance was, your ending fund balance, and then our total expenditures are here at the bottom. Next comes our Fund 73, which is your employee benefit trust.
Kelly, can we back up just a minute to the food service fund?
Sure, excellent.
Isn't there a limit as to how much can be in that fund before DPI says we need to spin that down? And is Sarah doing some of that with equipment purchases?
Yes. So I've met with Sarah in the two months that I've been here, and she is, she is working diligently with DPI to make purchases. I believe they've purchased walk-in freezer or refrigerator some, and then they've also purchased washer and dryer for their different things that they need to do for that. I believe that they had wage increases for their food service workers and then some additional positions that they quit.
So the wages can come out of this fund?
According to the work that she's done with DPI.
Okay.
So those are some of the pieces that she is working on. And then her and I will be in collaboration with how we can use those funds to best fit the district's needs as well as the food service department. So Fund 73, that's your employee benefit trust for other post-employment benefits or OPEB. So contributions can be made to the trust to pay for future employment benefits. The contribution is eligible for both equalization aids and categorical aids. So this, again, when we talk about putting money into Fund 10 fund balance, not aidable. This is aidable. So although the district generally pays for this employment benefit with the current year operating funds, when funds at the end of the fiscal year unspent, districts can give consideration to contribute to this trust fund, depending on if your district needs to or not, or if it's fully funded. So this gives a little bit of a history for what the district has done to fund this account. And the district made its last payment to the OPEB portion of the trust. And there are sufficient funds within the trust to cover all future post-employment health benefits, which is a really, really positive thing. In working with other districts, this is, this is sometimes a struggle for some districts. So this is really a positive. Funds within the OPEB portion are managed by PMA and invested with the Wisconsin Investments Series Cooperative. And then this just gives you a little bit more detail as to the history. And then this here shows you the details around the investment return, what your beginning balance is, and then what our ending balance is. Fund 80, that's our community service fund. This fund is used to account for activities such as adult education, community recreation programs, such as evening swimming pool operation and softball leagues, elderly food service programs, non-special education, preschool, daycare services, and other programs, which are not elementary and secondary educational programs, but have the primary function of serving the community. So in looking, in the past, the addition of the, in addition to the Aquatic Center, which our, our community service fund is primarily funding, they had, the past administration has used ESAR II funds in the past to help support a local daycare startup. And then they did also allocate ESAR III funds this year to help with the startup of the local daycare. And then the majority of the funds in Fund 80 are for the Aquatic Center. And historically, the levy has included $300,000 since 2021. And before that, I believe there... And before that, I believe it was two hundred and seventy thousand for the year prior to that. So we'd be looking at continuing that proposed levy. And then here, you can see what the beginning fund balance is, your ending, and then again, what the expected expenditures are. This just gives you a little bit of a history of the Community Service Fund. Talking about the Aquatic Center. The community has also, I just wanted to highlight, about three years ago, the district received over two hundred and eight thousand dollars of very generous donations from local foundations, businesses, and community members. And these donations were used to keep admissions low for the community by offsetting operational costs and then supporting our swim teams. And, and then although the district did plan on using that, due to COVID, there was supply chain issues, but that project was completed August of two thousand twenty-two. So on the next slide, we'll look at fund balance. So this kind of helps you break down the different funds, which are assigned and unassigned, which make up our total fund balance of about seven point six million. So when you see that big seven point six million, you might think, wow, we've got a lot of money in our quote-unquote savings account. But that's not necessarily how a fund balance works, which I know you all understand. But breaking it down, when you look at our dental, which is our reserve health insurance, there's about four hundred thousand dollars in that. We do have unspent common school funds from the past, which our team is looking to not continue in the future. We plan to expend any carryover to ensure that our kids and our staff are getting the funds that are intended to be used for that year. So those are assigned funds that we'll be spending. And when you think about common school funds, those are primarily library, media, tech. So they have very specific allowable costs that DPI has set in stone. But our technology media specialist is very up on working with our curriculum director and our administrative team to make sure those funds get spent. H R A, that's also committed fund balance of about one point three, one point four million. And then when you go, when you look down at our unassigned fund balance, that's about a total of five point two million. There is, the district does have fund for emergencies and then the cash flow piece. So one of the things that's really important about having enough money for cash flow is that you don't have to short-term borrow. So we'll talk about that when we dig a little bit more into our cash flow in the upcoming slides. And then we also have grant carryover. And so this grant carryover is comprised of a few different grants, but the major one is the achievement gap reduction. And so when you combine this grant carryover listed here with the current allocation that's expected, that's about one point two million dollars, which if you are carrying over almost six hundred thousand dollars and then have an additional six hundred thousand dollars that you need to spend, that's, that's taking money away from Fund Ten, which you need to really be putting and using the grant that DPI is stating. You're, you're getting it, it needs to be used for the kids and the staff in that current year. So we are being very diligent in looking at how we can allocate that grant carryover, as well as our current allocation with the three areas that need to be used, because DPI gives us very specific directives. And one of those is staff salaries. So we'll be putting as much staff salaries as we can into that, which will alleviate fund ten, and then we can hopefully use that for things that grants don't allow us to, like facilities. All right, so thinking about just what is, what is our new administrative team? What are, what have we been doing with the budget? What will we be doing? And what are some of the pieces that we are looking at in budgetary analysis? So some of the questions that we have looked at and are continuing to look at is, how have the last couple of years gone? So is there surplus? Is there deficit? What were the causes? Were they temporary? What trends can we identify, such as enrollment, levy, mill rate? And what are the current variables in the district? So what has changed? What's staying the same? We're also determining our district's budget calendar. We're involving the school board. So thinking throughout how the year is going to go, as we're really looking at, what is that strategic plan? What are the priorities of our district? And how do we directly align our budget? So not only the general fund, which is, which is generally taxpayer money, but how are we offsetting that and using all of our federal and state grants for exactly how they should be, so that all of the different pools of money, all of the different rules can be used very strategically together to meet the priorities of the district? So we're looking at what, what processes has the district used in the past? How has the district prioritized in the past? And what data has been used to determine what impact those budgetary pieces or priorities have made? And then how have those decisions been made? We're also looking at which processes will change and how will we improve this year and the next year? So really, that inquiry and then reporting and collaboration with all stakeholders, school board, community, staff, and all of those pieces working together. So this is just in a nutshell, looking at overall budgetary priorities. So how are we budgeting for our priorities? Like I said, how are we going to know they're in capital or not? So how do we know that we need to change? We're determining what those very specific priorities are, and then aligning that to a strategic plan, long-term strategic plan. So another question that we are using in our planning is, does the district have policies, principles, or goals that will dictate budgetary, budgeting priorities for both long and short term? So again, those big pieces are the levy and mill rate increases or decreases, fund balance levels, class size levels, staffing priorities. This is going to be a very big one, because obviously, we will not have S R next year. And so thinking about how has the district staff before? What funds are all of those staffing, staffing pieces coming from? Because there's a lot of different grants and a lot of different areas in which staff come out of. We're looking at program and curricular priorities. So especially with S R, certain things were created and making sure that we really analyze what is working, what isn't, and then how are we going to keep what is working well for our kids and our staff? Then we'll be looking at good budgetary strategies, curriculum adoption timelines, what are capital improvement plans and technology plans? So how are all of those working together in a short and long-term goal? One of the big pieces for our administrative team is also working very strategically together. So traditionally, in, in some instances, curriculum directors work very siloed with their ESEA grants. So they might have AGR, Title One, Title Two, Title Three, Title Four, and they just, whatever their goals are, that's how they're doing it. Special Ed works pretty siloed sometimes with their federal grants. And then you have Building and Grounds, who generally isn't a part of the overall movement of the district. And then you have the business manager, who's generally just putting it all together and, spreadsheets or whatever else. But our district is, our team is really focused on working together and looking at that budget and looking at our priorities as a whole. So even Building and Grounds is very involved in every decision that we make and looking at what funds our curriculum director might be the head of, same with our special ed director, our superintendent, and then looking at how do we, how do we use all of those funds together to really look at what our, what our priorities are? One of those pieces that we're really focused on is leveraging our federal and state grants. So eliminating the carryover, using that this year to really alleviate our Fund Ten, which helps with maximizing all of our resources. So as I talked about earlier, there's really specific allowable, allowances that you can do with grants. But if you get really strategic, you can use those strategically to alleviate things, to allow for facility pieces, which is one of our focus points. That allows you to have your comprehensive solutions. So that really lets us address our diverse district needs and also amplifies our impact. And then, and we really are focused on community involvement. So one of the things we'll hear about in our next meeting is the task force. So listening to the task force and listening to our community about what are our communities' input on our goals, because the budget really needs to impact that, and we need to leverage all of the different funds that we have to make that happen. Accountability and flexibility. So when we are collaborating, we really need to ensure that we have flexibility with our resource allocation. And then that can alleviate your risk mitigation. So some of the things that people talk about is like operating referendums or things like that. But one of the things that we can make sure we do to mitigate that risk is making sure that we're maximizing all of the federal and state grants that we have, so that the least amount of pressure can come on our taxpayers and our community regular fund. And then that allows for a lot of innovation and sustainability. So one of the things, one of the unique grants, federal grants that we have right now is S R Three. Generally, you don't, you can't use federal and state grants for facilities. So one of the things that our team is strategically doing is working with our Building and Grounds Director and that, and the school board with our ten-year capital improvement plan. And we're putting a very large amount of expenditures through our S R Three grant to support our middle schools, facilitating these windows and doors at this point. Cash flow. These charts really just show you how volatile throughout the year our revenues come in and how, when we get revenue from the state or from the, from our federal grants. So you'll see in the orange, our total expenditures are pretty even-ish, but your revenues are very volatile. So you might have some low points throughout the year, and that's why it's very important to make sure you're keeping a close watch and monitoring your cash flow and as well as monitoring your claims for your federal and your state grants. This, again, just shows your monthly revenues and expenditures in a little bit of a different format. So you can see generally, your low points are October and November. And then you start getting revenue in, so things start to even out a little bit throughout the later after November. This just adds in our checking and investment quarters. So you can see on the orange, that's our total expenditures, our revenues. And then you can see that the checking and investment tools with that unassigned fund balance can support our cash flow to eliminate us having a short-term borrow and spend money on interest. So we'll take a look at our enrollment data. So thinking about open enrollment and Wisconsin Parental Choice Program. Sometimes that's heard as vouchers. These have a pretty significant impact on our budget, specifically in Antigo. So we will take a look at what our numbers are. But if you want the historical views of how the numbers have changed throughout the year, you can look at what that transfer is. So remember I said, if you have members, they still, you still get that amount, but then we pay out different districts this amount per pupil. So the board requested that we had some desegregated data to find out where are students coming in from, where are they open enrolling into Antigo, and then where are they open enrolling out? And as you can see, the larger amount of children are open enrolling out of Antigo. And that number is about one point five million that we are spending out to other districts. We do get a revenue, which, for the students who are open enrolling into Antigo School District, of about three hundred and eighty-seven thousand. So that's a net loss to our district of about one point one, one point two million. Another really, really significant impact to our budget is the Wisconsin Parental Choice Program. So we are spending one million, one hundred and eighty-three thousand, two hundred and eighty-six dollars to supporting families that are utilizing the Wisconsin Parental Choice Program. So that is a number that we, that is included in the levy. So taxpayers, that is included in our property tax bill. Here are some enrollment projections. So generally speaking, our enrollment is declining at this point. But I know some positive initiatives and improvements that will change. This is just a pupil summer, count summary, so you can, and I know it's a little bit small, but hopefully, you're able to read it on print. But it just compares the changes from last year. So you can see a little bit of a change. But just remember that when we have this pupil count, so gee, this is what I was talking about, like when we have third Friday count, this is the number you get. This doesn't necessarily indicate that three-year rolling membership, which our funding is based on. But this will be counted into your three-year. Here's some historical mill rate chart. So you can see from two thousand eleven to two thousand and twelve. And then you can just see through the years how it has changed. We'll get specific numbers on the next. So one of the things, we do have an increase of a dollar twenty-one per thousand here from last year to this year. But when you're looking at six dollars and twenty-one cents, that is the lowest that it has been besides last year's for all of the years that we have data. So from two thousand eleven to, in two thousand and twelve, it was at nine dollars and twenty-three cents. It stayed around eight and hovered around nine, hovered in the sevens, almost eight again. And then it's back to seven, six seventy-five, and now we're at one, six twenty-one. So that leads us to the conclusion of the budget hearing presentation. The tax levy amount of local support needed to fund the general fund and community service fund operations. So the tax levy divided by the district's total equalization value, that's going to equal a mill rate. So our proposed levy is nine million, sixty-eight thousand, one hundred and eighty in Fund Ten, and then three hundred thousand for Fund Eighty. That's our community service for Aquatic Center pool operations. This levy does include that one million, one hundred and eighty-three thousand, two hundred and eighty-six for our vouchers or Wisconsin Parental Choice programs. Our mill rate, as I stated, was six dollars and twenty-one cents. And then our low revenue, just remembering why there is an increase is because we have that low revenue ceiling increase of a thousand dollars per member, which is per the signed by anyone.
Yeah, anybody have any questions for Kelly?
Sure.
Andy, go ahead.
So, I'll start with Kelly. And I went and talked to Kelly this morning. She did a great job of answering a lot of those questions I asked her this morning. But the, I'm going to put this thing in the paper every year a couple of weeks before we have this annual budget.
Yes.
And down here at the bottom, we have a percentage increase total levy from the prior year. It's ten point six three. And in your annual meeting budget publication, you're at forty percent.
Yes.
Just to explain why those numbers are different.
Yes, great question, Andy. So the proposed budget that you have in your, the paper that was published is before you get your October fifteenth certification numbers. So those are just proposed. I'm not sure why the law is the way that the law is, because it's, you don't have your actual numbers from the state at that point. You don't get them until October fifteenth. So that is a proposed budget, and changes are going to happen from that. I forget the exact date that that was, by fifteen days before this meeting.
Yes.
Yep, so October fifteenth is when you get your actual numbers. Then you plug them in to your worksheet, which is your revenue limit worksheet, and then that's what gives you your actual levy amounts and your actual mill rates. So us business managers, we are like clicking the refresh button.
Yeah.
Until you get it.
The big number in here was local sources, which would be our taxes.
Correct. Yes.
Change. And the proposed thing is run to any level.
Correct.
And state aid has decreased.
Correct, yes. So state aid has decreased for a couple of reasons. The, when you do Fund Ten, The, when you do Fund 10 deposits, then the, then the state does not give you aid on that. So that actually decreases your aid when you do, when you do that. But if you put money into Fund 46, which you also did, the state does fund that. So then you don't get those decreased in state aid, which alleviates taxpayers as well. The other piece you asked about was the 7 million. So that was the previous business manager's best assumption, which is all, and it's not just her, it's all business managers, we don't have the numbers until October 15. So she was conservatively doing her best assumption of what it would have been. So it's actually better to be low than it is to be high when you're thinking about what your anticipated revenues might be. So that is why it is lower, because you don't have actual numbers and nobody in the state does until October 15. In that case, it was a weekend, so we got ours on October 15. But generally, it's always October 15 if it's not a weekend day.
And, uh, so the tax levy of 621.
Mm-hmm.
Is about 24%. And so for a taxpayer, they may be thinking, oh, my school portion is going to go up 24%, but in reality, it's going to go up like 28% because their evaluation, I looked at the evaluations, there was like maybe most municipalities are going to be up by 20% or something, or they're not all the same.
Yep. So not all municipalities are the same, so we have 19 of them, and they're all going to have different assessed values, and assessed value is also different than equalization value, or equalized value as well, which I have a lovely handout that I can send to anyone explaining the differences. But, um, yes, all municipalities, based on what their equalized value is, is going to impact their tax bills differently. And the school district is not the only tax increase that you'll see. So when you look at your tax bill, you have to look at it very carefully because it's not all just the school in which taxes increase by.
Okay. I, I just thought, um, to make that clear, so whether taxes are going up or not.
Our taxes per thousand is going up by $1.21. So every thousand of your assessed value is going to increase $1.21. Mm-hmm. And when you look, it's really nice to look at this historical piece here because from 2011 all the way till 2022, $6.21 is still the lowest. So it actually decreased from $9 to $6. And yes, last year was an anomaly, and when you think about significant decline in enrollment, you're going to be, and you received more state aid last year. So that increases, that impacts your levy to be lower as well. So we can't help. The best we can do as far as, as far as doing what we can about getting the most state aid is spending our money and spending it wisely and not saying that Fund 10 isn't a wise decision because in some cases it is, because you want to increase that for cash flow purposes, so you don't have to short-term borrow and waste money on interest. So in some aspects, that is very responsible. In our case, we don't have to short-term borrow because we do have adequate cash flow. So, and then board is moving in the right direction with making Fund 46 pieces to help us with that state aid to remain. But we had a significant decrease in state aid, which also impacts your levy. And then obviously, that 10,000 to 11,000 is significantly going to impact your tax levy, which they did not have that last year. So that 499 is a bit of anomaly when you look at the, the history.
So, yeah, increasing from 10,000 to 11,000, is that all made up on local, the increase part, all made up on local taxes, or are we getting some state aid for the increased rate?
You, so our, we get a certain percentage, percentage of state aid and a certain percentage of property tax. That $1,000 isn't split, it's just within the same ratio.
It is within the same ratio already this year because, for example, you're getting funded on, your state aid is based on how much you've spent the year before.
In the formula, there's quite a complex formula, but yes, generally, it's very, yes, it's very complex, but yes, if you do not spend the amount of money that you are allocated, the state says, this is a very simplistic term, well, you must not need it, so we're not going to give you as much state aid. So it's really imperative that we make sure that we are spending wisely and looking at what the, what those future projections are.
Okay. And then one more question on taxes, because I know I've given calls, I think everybody here has given calls, but my taxes went up 40%. Let's say we wanted to, we're not going to levy to that amount, we're only going to levy to something less, what would that mean?
Well, you won't get as much revenue, which could cause a deficit, which will cause a deficit in our district's spending. And then when you're looking at the 325 that's projected to come on to next year's revenue limit, remember, my understanding from the last WASBO update that we had is that if you don't levy to the, to the low revenue ceiling, then you would not get that 325 the next year. So it impacts you for multiple years.
So it impacts for multiple years.
Mm-hmm.
And we are compared to a lot of districts where we get a paid proportion of state aid.
Correct.
About 60% and, you know, maybe in Toronto, they're getting, I think it's a little closer, they're getting probably many state aid.
There's a few districts that get very few state aids, yes, which is part of the complex issue of school district funding. So yes, you could look at all of this for hours, days, weeks, and looking at how different each district is. Another, another key piece of why the number for 4, 499 is different than 621 is because of increased equalization value as well. So you can see all of those numbers on page six as well, if you're looking at specific numbers as to how our equalization value increased.
And, and should I, did you increase more than, more than the state average?
I would have to look at those numbers exactly to see if we increased more than the state average.
Okay. Um, you know, that's all.
It is.
Um, yeah, the thing I brought up to you in this meeting was, and you were going to check out this, but it's my understanding that some districts include a letter from the district director to the municipalities, and how much money is going to voucher schools, so that affects our budget.
Yeah, I am going to check with our regional, our regional WASBO, which is an association of business managers, to see what our area and region is doing, and then along, along with the state level. Because I know you mentioned two, that was an optional thing, the treasurers, and we obviously have 19 of them.
Treasurers. From my understanding, they have to include, uh, certain, but it's.
Right.
Transparency.
Yes, and that.
Transparency reasons.
Yes, it does help taxpayers understand that it's not just necessarily all going to the school, to the Antigo School District, it's also going to voucher schools. And you don't get a lot of, you, you don't really get any information as to who's going to voucher schools, you know, where they're coming from, anything like that. You get a lot more information from open enrollment than you would from voucher schools, but we just, we just get the magic number, okay?
We just get a number, it's not broken down by the number of schools or number of schools with disabilities.
Nope. No.
Okay.
Any other questions?
I have some comments. We've, I know, Andy, you went to the thing on, up in Tomahawk or somewhere.
Joint Finance.
You went to Joint Finance. Thank you very much. You went to Joint Finance and we talked, we had two, basically two presentations, kids were there to talk about our district, and basically we've been saying for years that we're a low-spending district, we have not received our proper share of money that we are allowed to spend. So this is technically our first opportunity to increase our spending per child from $10,000 to $11,000. And yes, it's going to affect the mil rate by 1.21. However, this is another way to look at it, and as Mrs. Fossbender stated, we are getting on all the extra money that we're going to have in our budget, we're going to get the same rate on the 325, the 675, the total thousand. Now, in the revenue limit worksheet, last year for $10,000, our budget amount was $20,890,000. This year at $11,000, our budget on the worksheet is $22,979,000. So it's increased $2,089,000. So let's just call it 2.1 million. Now let's look at what we had to pay based on that budget sheet last year, that we, I'm going to take the 300,000 out of what we do for Fund 80, so that is what was in the revenue worksheet. Last year, our mil rate at 5.0 was $6,683,040. That's what we taxed for. This year, and it's in here, we are getting taxed for $9,68,180,000. So what's the difference? We are taxing for $2,685,140 more. Here's our numbers. Worksheet says we go up 2.1 million, but it also says our people are going to spend 2.7 million. Why is that? Kelly's already told us. It's because we put 500,000 in the fund balance. That's why. That's what's screwing our taxpayers, and we are not going to screw our kids. And I'm saying this, we need to go to 6.21 because we have to take care of our kids. Now I did another calculation. So what did we get from the state last year on that $6,683,000? They paid 69.44% of our revenue limit. So almost 70% came from the state. This year, they're giving us 60.54%. That's a reduction of 8.9% from the state. That's why our taxes are going up. Because again, we didn't pay our fund, we didn't, we added to our fund balance 500,000. So we're getting penalized for putting in the fund balance. And I will go back to 2021 on Kelly's chart, we went from 7.26 fund balance to 7.99. That was the fall I was thinking about running for the school board, and I was sitting next to you, Terry, and the slide came up that said that about a million was added to the fund balance, so I said, I won't use the exact word that I used, but I said, we're screwed. And he went, what? I said, the taxpayers are screwed. And then when we got to the mil rate, it jumped from 7.26 to 7.99, and I remember JD later saying something about how much it costs Trader potatoes when that happened that year, which was very significant for your company. So then, I got on the board, forced Fund 46, and our mil rate went down to 6.75. Paid off our loans, and last year we were at 4.9999, which is basically a five. But we have said, we don't get enough money for our kids. For once, DPI has allowed us to increase the amount by $1,000, by 10% for our kids. Are we getting screwed a little bit when we're going from an increase of 2.1, but our citizens are going to pay 2.7? Yeah. But it's something we need to do. We've got to take care of this school system. I got some questions for Kelly. When we interviewed you, one of the things you talked about was your work at CISA VII, you were the expert on federal grants, so that we had, you had other school districts coming to you, and what that's done for us is helped us where you can look at all these federal grants, and I know you said earlier that the AGR, what used to be Sage, we have 575,000 sitting there. Why do we have that? Why do we have that much money? Was, was AGR not used properly in the last year or two?
From my experience and research, yes. So it has very, and it has very specific allowable costs, and one of those is staffing, so 18 to 1. So when we look at enrollment, it's one of those things you need to plan for, is looking, you know, you need to make a staffing plan to be able to leverage your state funds. So in, when we came to the district in late August, and we started looking at the amount of AGR that was available, which together with the carryover was 1.2 million dollars, and no staffing was allocated, no classroom teachers were allocated to be coming out of that, that was one of the very first things we did, is we need to spend this down and we need to alleviate Fund 10 from spending salaries in which we can use AGR funds for, and that's what DPI is telling us we need to do. So that was one of the very first things we did. The next thing we did was we went to Title I, and we are looking at what staffing can we take out of general fund, put into Title I funds, same with Title II. So really looking at just the very first thing we do, and we have done, is look at all of our federal grants. SR3 was another one. There was $4.8 million that we were allocated in 2021 for SR3, and since 2021, only 500,000 was spent of that, and I believe that was claimed in July maybe, or very, you know, very soon, very close to August, I believe. So we have $4.3 million left to spend in SR3. So that's.
By September.
By September of.
24.
24, yep. And it was.
Is some of that for Jake's windows, 1.2 million dollars company, or is that?
So one of the things that was, that we came into when we stepped into the district was $4.3 million of, of SR3 funds, and looking at the priorities of the district's facilities, Jake did have a plan that was approved by the district if there was funds last year. And so we made it for sure that Jake has the funds for our children that are coming into the middle school, at the middle school, and our staff there for windows and doors. So yes, that is hot off the press, that when that is one of the large expenditures that we're doing out of SR, and then the other piece is, curricular materials are coming out of there, that's a very large piece, purchase services for our instructional staff, and then we are, again, going through all of our staffing. Who, who is our staffing, what is their role, and what allowable costs for those staffing can come out of AGR, any of our titles, IDEA, and then SR3. And then from there, we'll allocate all of those, and then we can look at. And then from there, we'll allocate all of those and then we can look at Fund Ten for the other needs that, that we have.
Are we getting the same amount of money in Title One this year?
I believe we are getting less. And there was about forty-five, about forty-four, forty-five thousand left in carryover. Which um, in my research, I believe the district has already used their fifteen percent um rule, meaning that there's only a, there's stipulations with when, of the amount you can have for carryover, otherwise you lose, you lose title funding.
So they again shorted us because we did not spend out Title One last year.
And my understanding also was that there was um, claim, uh, the application was not submitted till very late in the school year, which then affects when you can claim money, which means um throughout the years you saw that, that cash flow. If you're not claiming all of the things that can come out of your title grants because the application isn't finished, which that is due in August of the previous year. And generally, when you are doing your title grant, you do that in the spring um of the previous year. So that you can be claiming throughout the year. DPI wants you to be doing that at least quarterly. And um, from a business office standpoint, you want to be doing that as much as you possibly can to keep that cash flow coming in, as well as utilizing all of your title funds for what you can to alleviate again um taxpayer money, which is at Fund Ten.
Okay, I'm, I'm just going to say one more thing, JD, and I'll be done. Um, I did, I did a scenario, because I used to do the referendum, um, the revenue limit worksheet for twenty-some years. Um, basically, we've gone from five to six point two-one in our mill rate. So we've talked about the fund balance problem, the equalized aid going down nine hundred thousand dollars. So I was, I attempted, okay, what would have happened to our mill rate if we would have gotten to sixty-nine point four-four percent that we did last year? Instead of the sixty point five-four we got this year? Our mill rate would be five point three-seven. So because we didn't spend our money, it's a six point two-one instead of five point three-seven. So I'm done.
Okay, JD, I think you were next.
You uh, it made me realize my question was wrong. But yeah, on this Fund Eighty and Community Service Fund, you wrote in addition to the Aquatic Center, this year's budget includes the use of ESER Three funds to support the start-up of daycare. As I thought we talked about, well, we might be out of ESER funds next year, so we might not be able to do that again. We didn't know if we'd support it on a general plan.
Correct.
It made me wonder, when you put it right on the slide, could we actually use Fund Eighty, Fund Nis, get the community really wanted us to? I'm going to try to look it up, but I thought it was complicated. Maybe you, you.
So what I know from the um local daycare, daycare startup, um, is that I believe it was paid out of ESER funds for three years, I think. I'd have to look, this is the last year that it would be coming out of ESER Three. Um, and I think what, what I was told when I came to the district, so I mean, I wasn't here when that decision was made, was that um, part of, part of the deal was that the employees were going to have priority to be able to get their children into the daycare. Um, and I, I'm not exactly sure how many kids that that actually is impacting. But the district was paying sixty thousand dollars per year of grant funds to um fund the, fund the daycare.
Were we thirty or sixty?
Sixty.
Sixty.
Mm-hmm. So I mean, I think that when we look at the Community Service Fund, we think about what our community needs. And I think that there's going to be a lot of those pieces when we think about what is ESER Three being spent um currently. So one of those things is the Robinsons Nest, which is wraparound care at our buildings. Um, so, and that is benefiting the children and the staff um every day. I mean, there, it's always full. So I mean, that's the kinds of things that we need to be thinking about moving forward, like what are we going to continue? Um, what's benefiting our community and our children? And then how are we going to fund those?
Right, when I was, when I was just trying to read the DPI webpage, it said, it can't just benefit your students and staff. It has to benefit the community in general.
Yes.
And then it made me wonder to what extent, it's like swimming programs and recreational softball or something, I'd set as examples. To what extent, if there's YMC, school district collaboration, can we, could we support that?
So there is.
And I just want to know if it's lead or not, I don't know if we want to do it at all.
There is a lot of flexibility, there's a lot of stipulations, but there is also a lot of flexibility. So when the board and the community talks about what the, what the needs are, those are things that we can bring to DPI because um, business managers in, in the area um at our regional meetings are all using them for very diverse pieces that are really specific to their community. And DPI is always very open to having conversations around how that, how that looks. So I think those are all conversations we can have um to talk about how we use Fund Eighty. But there are a lot of possibilities and it just has to support, like you said, the community. Um, I think there is a lot of gray in that, but like you had said, it can't just support your school. It has to be a community piece such as the Aquatic Center. So we also, as a school district, allocate a certain amount of money for our students to use the Aquatic Center. So it's not like that just comes out of Fund Eighty, that would just come, that would come out as a revenue from us to the Aquatic Center. So that's all monitored.
Yeah, thanks, and one more question. It's, it makes it weird incentive where the state says you have to spend all your money or you don't get as much tax. Because if you're trying to be physically prudent, you think, well, I'm going to save some money. But if you do that, you hurt yourself the next year. So you get a kind of a catch twenty-two.
That's why, that's when we talked about those slides, about having very, very specific priorities, short-term goals, long-term goals. Not just waiting to the end of the year to say, spend this, spend this, spend this, like what do you want? What, what, what kind of things do you need in your classroom? It's getting ahead of the game, talking about what are our district goals, what are our facilities goals, what are our student achievement goals? What are our staff goals? Um, and be, and being very strategic on the front end and aligning your district budget to that so that it's not a surprise at the end of the year, like, whoa, we have this huge surplus, or whoa, we have this way, this big uh deficit that we need to depend on the fund balance for, or things like that.
Do we actually, maybe this should be obvious, do we actually end up with more money even though we taxed our people more? Because we kept that five hundred thousand and then didn't get aided on it? Or does it actually equal out, I don't know, the same?
Well. No.
No, we don't have more money, and we have the same.
We have five hundred thousand sitting in fund balance, we have money sitting over in Forty-Six. But when, when you go, your budget goes up two point one million and you're have to tax for two point seven. You're spending six hundred thousand on taxpayers because.
Right, but we're putting the money out on the taxpayers, we're still getting the money, they're just paying more. So we actually get more money in our checking account even though we hurt the taxpayers?
We have more money because of the.
And that's one piece now.
But I guess another question I have is um, assuming we have so much money in fund balance next year, because our fund balance is good, uh, we spend it in our tax rate.
Um, that all depends on what, there's a lot of pieces that go into the revenue limit worksheet. Um, and one of those is value, equalization values of land and things like that, enrollment, all those pieces. Um. So I mean, we look at projections and things like that throughout the year to look at what that's going to be. But again, it also depends on when you have increased membership. So next year, it's anticipated we have three point, or three twenty-five per child as well.
Oh, right, I agree, yeah.
So what, what it's going to come down to, Andy, is we know if we do the six point two-one, we can add three twenty-five next year so that we're at eleven thousand three twenty-five per child. And if we spend out our budget by putting money, whatever's left over into Fund Forty-Six, DPI will see that we spent our money. Therefore, their percentage to us of equalization aid should go up. Because they will say, so maybe it'll cover the difference in the three twenty-five or make it very close or actually have the mill rate go down. It's, 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 you're, the projecting at this point for next year is like it's a huge guess.
Mm-hmm.
It's a huge guess.
I mean, even looking at what you had.
Right, Mary Jo, it's a huge guess.
So, so if we just want to put the extra five hundred in Fund Forty-Six instead of fund balance, we would have been much better off.
Correct, that's, that's what I've been driving at since whatever that year was that I was sitting by Terry.
Mm-hmm.
So.
Which also meets the priorities of the district, which is facilities and maintaining our facilities for our kids and our community.
Okay, other discussion? I will entertain a motion to adjourn this budget hearing. Motion's been made by um Angie. All in favor of adjourning this budget hearing, may let me know by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. And let's carry this budget hearing down.